Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the special meeting of this city council. Everybody stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, state, take your call.
All right. Councilman Gary Donovan.
Councilman Gary Donovan, councilman at large, present.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor, councillor at large here.
Councilman Ronald Quagliani.
Ronald Quagliani, councillor at large, here.
Councilwoman Bridget Hosky is absent. Councilwoman Melly Garthwaite is absent. Councilwoman Sarah Ackerbally is currently absent. Councilman Mitchell Galagnano.
Councilman Mitchell Galagnano is here, present, and hungry.
Councilwoman Robin Watson Hamilton.
Councilwoman Robin Watson Hamilton here, fifth district.
Councilwoman Kathy Tucker is absent. Councilman Victor Boris is absent. Councilman Robert Bruno.
Councilman Robert Bruno, ninth district president.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone, tenth district president.
And Chairman Peter Massaro.
Chairman Peter Massaro, present, sixth district councilman.
Yeah, we do have a call on this matter.
Very good.
And I will read the call.
Yep.
Okay. West Haven City Council, notice agenda of special meeting, September 20th, 2022, 5:30 PM. In accordance with Rule Number 11 of the Rules Governing the Actions of the City Council, Chairman Massaro has called a special meeting of the West Haven City Council to be held at 5:30 PM on Tuesday, September 20th, 2022. The meeting will be held at the City of West Haven, 355 Main Street, third floor council chambers.
Thank you, Stacy. At this time, it will be public session. We're doing public session from 5:30 to 6:00. Anybody from the public want to address the council? Anybody from the public want to address the council? Third and last time, anybody want to, public want to address the council? Public session is closed.
At 5:30, too. Okay.
Okay.
Oh, you know, I was supposed to read Melly's letter.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry.
You got a letter to read, I'm sorry, you know.
Yeah, what did I do with it?
Throw it away.
So we're not, public session is not closed yet. So this is from Councilwoman Melly Garthwaite, 22 Second Avenue, Sandy Point, West Haven. "I am a transplant from Newtown, to be more specific, I grew up in Sandy Hook most of my childhood, living four houses down from the entrance to Dickinson's Drive, which is the road that leads to Sandy Hook School. After attending college, I bought a house on the other side of town in the Taunton Lake Preserve area. It was in that house on December 14th, 2012, that I would receive the heartbreaking news that changed our town's mantra, nicer in Newtown. Forever that left a scar so deep that I imagine it will take several generations for it to ever heal. I wholeheartedly believe if the ballistic vests that are being discussed tonight were hanging in the Sandy Hook Volunteer Fire and Rescue House on that horrific day, that perhaps some, or maybe all of the children and teachers who were murdered would still be here with us. The volunteer firefighters were some of the first on scene, and perhaps those vests would have been used to go in to try to save innocent lives. Some of those volunteer firefighters were hunters and carried arms in their vehicles, so there could be, there could have been a chance that this might have happened. Twenty-six innocent lives were taken, taken without any care from their murderer. I stood over a few of these children's coffins, one of them being a friend's daughter. What do you say to their parents, grandparents, and the rest of their family members? There was nothing that could be said. We just all tried to hold on to each other. There is nothing more senseless than the murder of innocent children and women. Newtown was plagued by media as days went on and on with funeral processions. Attending back-to-back children's wakes and funerals is something that I would never wish on, not one soul on this planet. And I will never unsee the little pink coffin with beautiful artwork drawn all over it by family members. It haunts me to this day. At our last council meeting, I listened to fellow council members question these vests, which seemed odd because, to me, these vests are an absolute priority. While I sat there, I realized that most likely none of them had to live through the aftermath and emotional trauma of a mass shooting as I did along with the rest of Newtown. I also heard cries from residents that this ARPA money should not be used for vests, that it was meant for the people, and why would we spend it on these vests because it was not being used for the people? I disagree, and here's why. Charlotte Bacon, age six; Daniel Barden, age seven; Rachel Davino, age 29; Olivia Engel, age six; Josephine Gray, age seven; Dylan Hockley, age six; Dawn Lafferty-Hodge-Sprung, age 47; Madeline Hasu, age six; Catherine Hubbard, age six; Chase Kowalski, age seven; Jesse Lewis, age six; Anne Marquez Green, age six; James Metoli, age six; Grace McDonald, age seven; Anne Marie Murphy, age 52; Emily Parker, age six; Jack Pinto, age six; Noah Posner, age six; Caroline Pravidi, age six; Jessica Recos, age six; Aviel Richmond, age six; Lauren Rousseau, age 30; Mary Sherlock, age 56; Victoria Soto, age 27; Benjamin Wheeler, age six; and Allison Wyatt, age six. These 20 young children aged six to seven years and six administrators were someone's daughter, son, granddaughters, grandsons, great-granddaughters, great-grandsons, niece, nephew, mother, grandmother, aunt, cousin, friend, neighbor. If the ballistic vests were hanging in the Sandy Hook Volunteer Firehouse, they might have saved their lives. I urge the council to approve these vests. I want our West Haven firefighters to have them in their toolkit to save your daughter, your son, your granddaughter, your grandson, your great-granddaughter, your great-grandson, your niece, your nephew, your mother, your grandmother, your aunt, your cousin, your friend, your neighbor, and the list goes on. Should something like what happened at Sandy Hook, God forbid, ever happen in West Haven, these ballistic vests are indeed for all of us as they will give protection to the very brave souls that will run into harm's way and save innocent lives, one of which may be your very own."
Thank you, Stacy. Anybody else like to come up and address the council? For the second time, anybody else like to come up and address the council? Third and final time, anybody else like to address the council? Public session is closed.
5:37.
5:37. We have in front of us in communication, 8:26, regarding the fire department with protective bulletproof vest. At this time, I'd like to, I need the chiefs on to come up and give us an idea.
No.
Public session is coming down. No, I don't think, public session, if nobody's here, we could go on. Pretty sure, can't we?
I, I think that our public, our special meeting can go on because we, we called it for 5:30. We allotted a specific time for... No, we, we called it for 5:30. We allotted a time slot for the public information session, so I think we're okay.
Okay.
I just want to make sure.
Okay, chiefs.
Members of the council, thank you for inviting us to give you a little preparation and some background on the ballistic vests and how they can help our community. Thank you for the chiefs for coming tonight, and members of the public. And especially thank you to Councilwoman Garthwaite's letter, very touching. And we realize our responsibility to the public from her letter. So our job in this situation is to stop the bleed as quickly as we can, okay? Trauma is what causes the death in these situations. And if we can get in there and, and stop the bleed with various methods that we have, tourniquets and bandages, and extricate these victims, the better chance we have of saving their lives. So, speed is really the name of the game. So when our police officers go in to neutralize the armed intruder or active shooter, we're going to go in right behind them, okay? And we're going to use these tools to stop the bleed. So, we need our members to be protected because that armed intruder may or may not be neutralized at this point. So that's the reason why we, we need them. That's, that's our goal in this whole thing. And I know school shootings take most of the media when these things happen. But we have to remember that there are any type of assembly, like our fireworks, our Savon Rock Festival, UNH festivals, Yale West have a large number of people. The School of Nursing is at Yale West in West Haven. So, you know, it's not just, you know, we all think of it as an elementary school from, from Sandy Hook. But think about what's going on in our country. Supermarkets, shootings, yeah, movie houses, concerts. So all of those fall under our responsibility of protecting the public. So when we do our planning, and without giving away too much of our strategy and how we're going to do that, you know, we have a citywide policy. And, and it all comes down to our mission of our goal is to get in there quickly and as protected as we can to stop the bleed. So currently, we cannot outfit a shift of firefighters to accomplish that goal. Okay, we have four in each district, okay? But we have 25 firefighters on, on shift per day. So, we're asking for an additional 15 of the newest vests. And, you know, our older vests are an older generation chiefs, and, and we brought up an example of what we're currently using. So when I talk to you about speed and getting to the victims and being able to duck for cover, okay? This is what we're currently using. Chief, if you wouldn't mind bringing up our current, our current vests. So this is old generation. It will take one bullet, and then it's done. Like the chiefs have said, they, they use ceramic plates. If anybody wants to feel how heavy that is, take a look at that and think about getting to the third floor of Yale West and saying, now you got to go to work and stop the bleed. Anybody want to pick that up? No? Light? Yeah? So I want you to get to the third floor of UNH and start treating many gunshot victims. All right? So, our current, so that takes one round with a ceramic plate. Now, now I want to show you what we're asking for, so you know what you're voting on. So this is all about preparation for us, right? Planning, okay? This will stop multiple rounds, okay? Can you duck for cover? And can you make the third floor to rescue victims with that compared to what I just showed you? And take multiple rounds. That's about 50 pounds.
Councilman, the other difference with these is, as heavy as they are, once we get in there, the EMTs and medics have to work on the patient. Much easier with the newer vests.
And we have to carry that patient out, so we have an extraction team, not only a treatment team, but an extraction team. So if we had 26 victims, like in Sandy Hook, and 12 vests, what are we asking from, for our people to, to save lives? So I'm going to turn it over. I, I've said my spot, and I'll let the chiefs from the other districts speak. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I hope I was able to educate you a little bit on what we do.
Good evening, thank you for your time. I'm going to put it quite simply. Going in for a shooting incident is not our primary responsibility. That belongs to the PD. But in our line of work and our industry, as I had to explain this morning in front of MARB, OSHA requires that for every IDLH or hazardous incident, you have to have two more people to come in. And that's because we have to be able to retrieve someone who becomes injured. Not any different than what the PD has to. God forbid this happens and we have an officer go down, we're going to be the first ones to go in after them. But, and if that issue hasn't been mitigated for the shooter at that point, we are more exposed. And as I said this morning in front of the MARB, we're able to do what we do as a hazard only because we're trained and properly equipped. These vests will properly equip more of us to be able to help more of them. And by protecting us, we in turn protect the community. Because it's an acronym, and correct me if I'm wrong. When we onboard new firefighters, and I don't know exactly what the PD does, but we tell the firefighter, we ask them the one question, "Who do you think is the most important person on that scene?" And a better answer say, "Yes, I am." Because if, without us being able to do what we do, no one else is going to be saved. And that's essentially what these are about. We're not going to be doing any police work or anything like that. It's to protect us, to give us that level against a hazard threat that could exist. So we could help our other brothers as well.
Evening, council members, Chairman. As my colleagues have stated, it really is a different world we live in. And certainly Chief Perno and his, his people have learned it the hard way, too. A lot of planning goes on behind the scenes between the Police Department and law enforcement, the fireside with EMS, and Joe Soto, who is our emergency management director. We work as a team. Everybody has their own specialty, but we work as a team. So, out of these incidents nationwide and even worldwide, we've learned things that we didn't know before. And from the earliest, I mean Columbine, I believe, to now, it's, the tactics have changed. There's things that we can't reveal here, I'm sure the chief will agree, that tactical movements of the, of law enforcement and EMS is critical to keep up to date with what's going on. Where I'm leading is, the biggest loss of life in all these after-action studies is people not getting medical attention and time and bleeding out. And even though we knew that for over a decade, the incident we talked about earlier in Texas, the delay of getting in there to neutralize the shooter and getting EMS, paramedics and EMTs in there to treat, uh, treat the victims and get them out of the building probably cost a lot of lives. So the new train of thought in our industry is, in emergency management, is the police officers are going right in right away. Whether they have backup, or they're going in to find the shooter or find whoever the threat is, and their job is to neutralize them. Once they clear an area, our people are going to be right in there with them to treat the victims, if, if in fact there are victims. Certainly, as Chief Terenzio stated, officers are down. We don't want to delay. We want to have someone at the door. When the attack team goes in for the Police Department, we want a medical team on the lawn ready to go. Now, to do that, we can't put them into harm's way in the event the shooter comes around or there's multiple shooters. You know, the police clears an area and they think they've got it done, and then someone else pops in, they're not going to care who, what you're wearing, all right? So we can't put our people in harm's way. We've trained with the Police Department multiple times over the last 10-plus years. Our tactics are getting better, we change as, as things go on. The vest that we have now was great because we had nothing before. So for, for going from going in with no protection, having ceramic plate, we were kind of more comfortable that way. Now we have armor-piercing bullets that, you know, the new technology can stop where the ceramic would not. As Chief Scott Ferrell stated, one shot and that vest is done. If there's multiple shots, you know, we, we could be in trouble. The vest that we have, the, the new ones we'll show you, and Chief Johnson is with us, he has quite a bit of intel on this, but they all stop multiple rounds. And, and the bigger the caliber, it still stops the bullet. Small caliber, less injuries, you'd be getting bruising, swelling, you may get a fractured rib. But in all the years nationwide, I believe, Billy, it's, anyone wearing this new vest has been out of the hospital within two and a half to three hours after being shot, multiple times. So, as we did with, with the Police Department and the, and the manufacturers, even if you get hit with your new vest, you're in the game. You're in the fight. Or in our case, we're still able to take care of our personnel, our patients, and get them out of there. So, the technology between that ceramic plate and today is mind-blowing, mind-blowing. So, we're looking for more vests. Like was stated earlier, we have 25 people on shift every day, every shift. Our goal is get 25 or 30 eventually, but we're going to work our way to that. We'll take whatever we can get, but the technology and the amount of vests we have, we're, we're well behind the, well behind the times. So, whatever you can do to help us, I think this will go a long way to protect our people. Every one of those shootings that we did after action with, the people said, "We never thought this would happen in our town." We, we can't take that outlook. We got to learn from their lessons. It's not, it's not if, it's when. And we, we hope to have these vests and never use them. But if something happens and we don't have them, that's adding to the tragedy as far as I'm concerned, so. And if you want to see the other vests, the chief will show it to you if you have it. Or if you have any questions for any of the chiefs, again...
The lightweight armor protective vest that we will be receiving is encapsulated into this, which is a two-year generation behind of what we're getting, which is much more lighter. You can see the difference. Steve, could you, our current chief, please? Which has no neck and throat protection, has no shoulder and bicep protection, has no side rib cage protection, and no crotch and groin protection. The vest that before you now, being requested, of this model, you can see. Can you see the two differences between the two? And the other more layers of protection that this will give us in comparison to that.
One other item, how this has come to be unfortunately. To emphasize how critical this is, the fire departments and the Police Department, we're hand-in-hand with that. Chief Perno's been very helpful with, with us. We don't know anything about ballistic gear at the beginning, but the Police Department helped us out, so we're partners on this.
I believe it was 2015, we did a decent-sized drill at the high school, and that was the eye-opener for the Fire Department as to how ill-equipped they were. They, we didn't even tell them what it was going to be. It was a total surprise to them. And we had students just lying down on the floor with a piece of paper that said what their injury was. And it was very hard for the Fire Department to actually walk over someone and not tend them aid. But through that, there were still blanks going off as we had a, a scenario going. And they were just, it was such an eye-opening because they just came in in their regular work uniform, their duty uniform, no protection, nothing. And that we did that on purpose to show them, listen, this is what it's going to be like. This is what you need. And we even went to the point where the helmets that we found, they were just going to drill holes in the side of them for the stethoscope because they were just, there was nothing on the market for them. And this, the tact, this was going to be for the tactical medics, where they had just their carry gear so they could carry things on their vest as well as the medical bag. But we've been looking for this, and they've been getting this, and I'll be quite honest with you, junk to use. And, listen, if they get the opportunity to get something that is state-of-the-art, then the lifespan of that, as well as what I'm looking for here, the lifespan of that is well worth the investment. Because when they train with it, and other incidents will take place, I'm guaranteeing that, hopefully they don't, but we learn from that. You know, you've all the, most currently Virginia Tech, Columbine. We've all learned what was, was wrong and what we now have to improve on. And the firefighters' medical field is from, they went from nothing to where they are today. And it's been very hard for them to do that because it is ballistic, and nobody actually equates ballistic with fire service. But in today's day and age, you do, because they're right behind us. And I support their efforts 110%. I thank you.
Any questions?
I have, I think it's more of a statement than a question. When I heard about these vests the other day, when I woke up the next morning, I really started thinking, not just about school shootings, but about West Haven in general. I thought about bank robberies. I thought about things that happen in churches. I thought about something happening in City Hall. There's an awful lot of people angry at us. So I started thinking, if one of us were shot and we were bleeding, but the Fire Department could not get to us, what if it was my son? What if it was my mother? What if it was my brother that was laying there and he bled out because we did not have the proper equipment? I think one life lost because we did not get these vests is way too much. I just can't be the councilperson that votes no for this for that reason. However, I still want to be good stewards of the money that we protect. So what I'm going to ask you, and I'm going to ask Chief Perno also, we, I would like to personally see a line item in your budget next year for $10,000. That'll just sit there for the next 10 years. And then when the equipment is all, needs to be renewed, you don't have to come up and find the money somewhere. It'll be there and we can replace it right away. And that's what I'm asking you.
I think that's a great point. I mean, if we can get state-of-the-art equipment now, and we know the shelf life of it is, we could probably do that. When we started this, it was hard for the public or people to associate the ballistic gear with the fire service. You know, over time, it's been, the educational components have gotten out there, but it's expensive, and as Chief Perno has, we took Cami Downs. That's what we did. So to, to have it in the budget to build up to replace it in the shelf life is five years. I think we can do that.
Can I elaborate on that?
Go ahead.
The five-year shelf life of these protective ballistic vests does not mean in the sixth year, if it unfortunately had to be used, it would not stop a bullet. The five-year is made by manufacturers because five years ago, this stopped everything that was out there. Since then, the civilian public has access to armor-piercing rounds. So they had to create new technology, which was the birth of these vests, which now protects us from everything, police officers from everything. Five years from now, you need to revisit what's out there and then see if you need to upgrade your equipment or not. Would I wear this in year six and seven in an active shooting in, in a minute?
With today's weapons.
With today's weapons. But five years from now, if the, if, if the, if the rounds change, become the velocity and stronger and more piercing, and, and the breach this vest, which is a 10-layer vest, and during our demonstrations with the Police Department, no round went past the fifth lev, uh, yeah, the fifth, fifth...
Fifth layer.
Fifth layer, which was remarkable. That is what the, yes, that is what the...
Um, that is what the, yes, that is what the, um, expiration dates truly represent, a, a level of technology, more so than these, these don't evaporate or get weeds or, or dry out on the shelf or anything like that. It, it's just a technology level of upgrading your equipment when and if needed. Otherwise, if you don't revisit that and you've got a vest that's worth twenty years protection and in year eleven, there's a bullet out there that this can't stop anymore, you could be yet again standing here behind me as well.
Just one more thing with that. This vest, we, we, we tested it. I'll tell you what, uh, overwhelmed by what this thing can do. And I have a great appreciation for the police department being on the front lines. This is a fifty caliber.
Five hundred Magnum.
Five hundred caliber.
Five hundred Magnum.
Five hundred Magnum? Five hundred Magnum. It's about this big of a bullet. This did not penetrate the, the vest past the fifth layer of protection. It comes out, if you look at it, it's like a mustard ball. Now, if I. An indentation on the, in the clay on the, uh, the, uh, display dummy or whatever it is. Very deep, but it would break a rib, puncture a lung. Police officer and/or firefighter wearing that vest would survive. And that was from point blank.
And to segue off of what Chief Johnson just provided and in answer to your question and your concern about the older equipment in the fire service, we relegate newer equipment when it becomes older, we relegate it to other purposes. So this vest, we collectively intend to provide with the first responders that are actually going in. The older vests will be given to command staff that won't necessarily be going in right away, but could be in harm's way off at the command post. And that's what we'll protect ourselves with. Because, not that I was in the service, but you hear of, they always go for the glitter. And sometimes we wear it to a.
Was it, did the old vest take one shot? So the first chief down, the other took a run.
Right, exactly.
You all said, County?
Yeah, they, um.
So this is pretty critical. I get that. But at this point, I'm at an emotional kinda crossroad. Because I trust each and every one of you to do what you have to do to protect West Haven. Therefore, I would think that if this was so critical at budget time or before now, you would be standing in front of us with the same, same kinda presentation. I struggle because there is so many other needs that we need to take care of. And all of a sudden, this became like a dire emergency and I'm struggling. So there I am, here I am.
Did I answer?
Please.
Yeah, I see your point, but, um, we've been ten, fifteen years trying to get our hands on this equipment. It's been a long journey. At the beginning, the only jack, the only, uh, agency that can get this, uh, equipment was law enforcement. And we couldn't get it. And Chief Perno and West Haven tried to get us the vest through procurement as a law enforcement for the fire departments. Couldn't get it. As these things went on, we were able to, uh, obtain what we could. We put in for grants. The AFG grant, which is what we basically have to go with, um, which is the FEMA Assistance to Firefighter Grants. Five years ago? Five or six years ago, put ballistic gear on the list of things that you can request. And, but it was a low priority. To this date, I don't, I, we don't know of one community in the country that received one vest out of that grant plan. So to try to get that, we, 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 uh, went out to the public to get the vest. As far as putting twenty-five vests into our budget prior to now, a lot of it fell on deaf ears. Okay, plus, we had, uh, the mu- the, uh, OPM cut our, um, pilot program. So, you know, we're getting a little bit back now. So we were in the financial position to do this then. We got what we could. The chief's been good as far as helping us get equipment from other sources. But to put that full line item budget with no discount into the fire budget, we tried and it didn't, it didn't work. But now we're on the right road. Now, um, we do have our, some of our funding coming back. We do have, uh, better technology, but we're not there yet. So what we did is we went out and we scraped up twelve vests, four for each district. And the reason being is, whenever there's an incident, whether it's in Allentown, the center or West Shore, we're all going. That first arriving unit, wherever this action is, those four guys are going in, there's eight coming to back them up. So there's no delay. But if the size of our city, the density, the population, even, even, you know, twelve isn't enough, but it's better than what we had. So again, I think, uh, Councilwoman O'Connor and, and your com- comments are well pointed that if we can get this gear, the hi- the best technology out there right now and start putting money away each year going forward to replace that, that would be our, our goal to do that. Prior, the urgency was there, the need was there. The acceptance that firefighters need a ballistic gear and providing the funding for it wasn't there.
From who?
From the federal government, to state government, to local government, to taxpayers. You know, we put in, you know, uh, fifty thousand dollars for ballistic gear and what are you doing?
No, but this is something that, um, depreciates. So you would put it in.
Yeah.
Like, like you're talking about now, what could be done. You know, you put it in and you know at five years where you're gonna be.
Right.
And you just ease it into your, your budget. That's planning. That's good planning, right? Cause this sounds like you really need this stuff, but it should have been talked about a long time ago. But now there is this big urgency in.
No, I think, I think urgency should be replaced with opportunity.
Okay, I, I would agree with that. I would agree with that.
To get all this equipment up front and to come back here every five years, no, nobody wants that. If we get this, hey, give us twenty-five, give us whatever, you, give us fifteen, whatever you can, because the opportunity is here. The money in that ARPA, it clearly meets that standard. So they wanna have the biggest impact per dollar for that money. I can't think of a better one. So as far as that goes, I agree with you, uh, Councilwoman, uh. We shouldn't be here every five, we shouldn't be here every five years looking for something. We will, and, and we've done it with our apparatus. You know, we can't run out and buy a million dollar truck every year. We buy the truck and then we put money, try to put money away for the next fifteen, twenty years till we need another truck. So. Yeah, to replace it, we, I'd be absolutely would think that would be part of our, our planning.
And if I just may add real quick, uh, it's the technology advancement that has occurred too. Armor piercing bullets are becoming more of a thing. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chief. That we're gonna surpass the ceramic. So knowing that and watching the incidents and hearing all the things that would come across our desks on a daily basis of what happens nationwide, even worldwide, but even more so nationwide. Even what we had is becoming obsolete to the point of, of what advancement. I'm sorry.
Can I add one more thing to that? This, this is the equipment component of our program. We have to put a lot of time and money into training. We have these big drills with the police department and they're very successful. And every time we do them, um, we learn more. We have to bring everybody back to do that. So the cost of training and maintaining, um, our skills for this operation and keeping our EMTs and paramedics, uh, trained to do this in a tactical manner, um, takes a lot of time and money. So that will be coming out of our budget. So it's just not, we're gonna get here and, and, uh, not having a commitment financially to this program. We, we're financially committed from the day one till, uh, we don't need it anymore. But that helps.
Oh, Seth, thank you.
Again, I mean, I echo the sentiment and you've heard me say this before and I've said it in other meetings. And I also struggle with, um, the timing and I understand that there's an opportunity now. Um, I'm, you know, no different than anybody else. Really understand what you do. Appreciate what you do, value what you do. I get it. The last thing we wanna see is anyone harmed in any situation like that, especially, you know, uh, citizens and certainly not police or firefighters or anybody for that matter. The passion that you have when you come before us and you present this topic.
Yes, Chief.
The passion that you have when you come before us to present this topic is remarkable. The same energy you had when you came before us, when you were looking, asking us for the bonuses. The amount of money that we okayed at that time. Why wasn't this put before that? This is a safety issue. This is a topic to me that should come first. And it didn't. The same need was there. And we have lots of people that are standing in line looking for funding. I don't discount the fact that this is really, really important equipment. I think you need it. But I also think, just like I said to the chief in the last meeting, that this should have been top of mind when the budgets were built. This is what you should have been coming before us and arguing for on behalf of your firefighters and your police. And I think that to me would have made me feel a whole lot different about today. Because I feel like what got put before us was about bonuses and it was, it was completely different focus than what you're talking about today. It's like you put the cart before the horse. And I feel kind of like, um, I feel really frustrated that this is what you chose to do and the approach that you chose to take. And to lay it in our lap before us like it's an emergency, I don't appreciate. I have to be honest with you. I understand there's an opportunity that hadn't been there before, but I really wish you had chosen to do this differently.
And I respect your point on that. And like, in hindsight, we probably would have, but as with you as this legislative body and our, when, when this funding became available, we were trying to understand how, what qualified what didn't, who needed what, who didn't. What was the magnitude of the needs of the city? And the mayor had to make up a plan. And, um, we had to get into the, into the process of what qualifies and what doesn't. As far as the bonuses go, that came up at the time of, it was, you know, the, the topic of the meeting was the bonuses. It was, uh, we had, um, ten thousand dollars per. What was the total on that?
A million and thirty.
A million and thirty. So. For the medics and EMTs that are going to everybody's home for every call at their risk, yes. Eighty-five? A million and thirty. However, again, um, are we saying this is an emergency? It only is if we have an event. Cause I'll tell you right now, before we bought the ceramic vest, we had gotten together and said, okay, we don't have protection for our people. If we get an active shooter in a school today, what are we gonna do? Our people aren't going in. Try to tell a part firefighter, he's not going in when there's people inside bleeding, they're going. They were gonna go whether they had protection of getting shot or not. They were gonna go at the risk of their families, whether they had the protection or not, just like they did during COVID. When everybody was running out, they were running in. So we just want to be able, and I can speak, I think, for any chief in the room here, police or fire. Our first priority is everybody goes home. That means everybody that we, we, we put on the street to go in and protect or save a life, we're committed to make sure that person goes home to his family or her family and their kids. So as far as this being an emergency, it's not an emergency. This is before the city council at this point in time. This came up that we, we were eligible for the ballistic gear, which we didn't know at the time we were here before. So we're learning the process like you folks are. All right, if we had a checklist in the beginning, here's, you know, prioritize these things, I agree with you, we would have been more efficient. But that wasn't the case and it still isn't. Federal government, state government, they keep changing the guidelines. You know better than I do. You see there every night. I know what you do. And it, it's frustrating that, um, it's not as clear as they, but we, we do what best we can. And.
Can, can I just ask also before you go? The, um. Go ahead.
Just to help out the chief with, uh, to answer your question. So when, when we had asked for that hazard pay money, you know, just thinking back in the timeline, talking with Chief Johnson, we didn't really know we were that unprotected until we did our assessment, Chief.
So was that twenty fourteen, I think, that you mentioned? That you did that drill?
Twenty fifteen is when we got the vests.
The ceramic.
But we, the ceramic vests, but as I said earlier, the advancement of technology with what we're proposing today and the increase in what the ballistics that are being used today, it was, it was just until now.
Right. I mean, I don't wanna ever sound like we're trying to dispute how vulnerable people are in emergency situations. Like, I get that. That's why I didn't pick up the vest. I know how heavy the vest is. I don't need to, you don't need to show that to, to me of all people, let alone, I mean, we get that. We understand how vulnerable you are going into any emergency situation. That's not the point. That's not what we're saying here. That's not it.
And again, to the urgency, it was technology being available now that we didn't have before. The vulnerability of the ceramic plates, and I'll let Chief Johnson chime in that, cause he, he did most of the, uh, data gathering.
I mean, I understand that.
So to address your, your, uh, comment about coming for the, um, ten thousand dollar, uh, uh, figures and monies prior to coming to the urgency of this. The, in the now urgency of this vest came to, to a head early summer when I was invited to a ballistic demonstration at a local, um, uniform distributor of ours. So to measure, I showed up with ours. And, and this was a, a trained professional who said one shot and it's gonna, it's gonna shatter ceramic. So just let me finish. So what, what happened was at that point there, we didn't know two things. That the availability of armor piercing rounds to the civilian public and the fact that our vests couldn't stop them. That which then led us to a demonstration that the police department kindly invited us to, which those rounds we passed around came from where they demonstrated the ballistic armor protective, um, vest. And, and there was when the urgency came to a forefront where we were extremely underprotected. We are underprotected, overweight and had an inability to perform our duties as efficiently as we would be able to in the better equipment, lighter equipment and more protective equipment.
Right, respectfully. Respectfully, I understand.
Okay.
I think we all understand that. The point is taken.
No, but you said how you, we asked for the other money first and that may have happened in, in, in a timeline.
Right.
When that money was requested, we weren't aware of the deficiency in our vest at that time.
I struggle with that. There's been in the news, there's been reports for years about this, this, this information's been out there. And I'm just saying, and I, and I'm not, I don't wanna debate this. I'm not debating anything with you guys. I trust what you're saying. I get it. I just still question the timing. Cause we gave a load of money to you guys for bonuses. And it feels to me like now, it feels to me like now.
Well, that, that's your.
Safety came second to bonuses.
That's your prerogative and we respect your opinion.
Absolutely.
I just want to make sure that you realize that we're not trying to pull a fast one here.
Well, I don't think that I'm saying that. I don't think we're saying that anybody's trying to do anything.
We're gonna do this, we're gonna do that.
Like that.
I think that they explained it far better than I did. We had the vest, we, we thought we were in good shape. We realized we were not. So here we are.
Were, we just out of cur- were, did anybody receive grants? Was Allentown, did you guys get any grant funding at all?
For ballistic gear?
For ballistic gear?
Anything, any grant funding.
Tomorrow is a, I was just got off the phone before coming. Tomorrow is a, I was just got off the phone before coming for this meeting tonight, uh, this is why I was late. Uh, there's a large round of awards happening tomorrow. And the state delegations will be alerted to that first before it's made public.
Okay.
So.
Might there be any possibility that any of the funding that you're gonna get could be used for that purpose?
Unfortunately, to my knowledge and my experience in the AFG and Safer Federal Granting, no. What you put in the thirty-two or thirty-four page application is exactly what has to be, be spent on.
So even with the knowledge that you gained, when the application was made, you still didn't ask for this equipment to be included in that application?
It was never appro, no, because you can't ask for it in AFG. And the AFG had to be put in uh, January. And we didn't know that our vests were not up to date.
As I stated earlier, AFG grants, ballistic gear was added to the list, but it's such a low priority.
Low priority.
For other things, nationwide, not one, not one fire department has received a vest that I know of through the FEMA grant. It's on the list, but it's so low that they haven't, they haven't awarded one vest yet.
No. But, and also those applications had to be in January or February.
For this round, yeah.
For this round, prior to our knowledge of being told that we probably need better equipment, is your sense of what it is.
We had applied first time. When the first was available, we applied. I thought we wrote a pretty good citywide grant for it. And when it got denied, we called FEMA, our, our contacts there that are people that oversee New England. What happened to our grant? And they said, oh, the grant was great. We're just, we're just not awarding vests. So, again, that's where I said to Councilwoman uh, Watts is uh, you know, we, we, or Hamilton, Watts, Watts, Hamilton.
Just okay. We go way back. Why?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We asked for these things, but even though it's on their list, it wasn't industry recognized that, you know, we, it's a priority until now.
And we do have grants coming in. We did just receive one for a new bottle fill station. We just had one last year for all three of us for SCBA's. Uh, Center got one for a fire truck. We got one last year for a fire truck. We're waiting and hopefully tomorrow I can come in front of this board and say, say we have another nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars to replace all our radios. Another very expensive but very important piece of equipment to keep everyone safe. And again, increasing technology because that technology now is computer. We don't have digital radios, we have analog radios, and there's all kinds of documentation on all of that. I mean, I totally appreciate and understand your question. I do. And we're trying to give you the, the most honest, transparent answer we possibly can. And I can understand the optics.
Yeah, I think the public.
But this is what it's about.
I think the public deserves transparency. And I think that that's.
We try to provide it every day. We agree.
I, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else got any questions? Councilman Quaid?
Thank you, chief. Um, listen, thank you for the presentation. Um, so I heard you this morning, uh, Chief Torenzio talking with the MARB. And I know that you just, you know, um, kinda listed off a few, but I, you know, I do appreciate the amount of grants that the three of you collectively um, apply for. And ultimately, right, it's great that you apply for it, but ultimately receive, right? So, so based on what you said just here, a couple of, a couple of trucks, a million dollars worth of radios. Um, I know you have a Safer grant that's pending. I mean, I think within the last couple of years, what would be the dollar amount of grants that, that your three departments collectively have received? Ballpark?
Uh, since uh, maybe the past two, three years, three million, maybe, north of.
Right. Which.
If I, if we get the radios and if we get the Safer.
Right. No, and I appreciate you recognizing that there are other forms of revenue besides the taxpayer, right? And so if you didn't go for these grants or receive these grants, then you need trucks, right? You need radios. In my opinion, you need, you need, you know, ballistic vests. But that would be borne by the, the taxpayer in the mill rate. So, so recognizing that you recognize that the taxpayer really is kinda, you know, they're stretched. But we need to be able to run a, a safe and efficient fire service, then you go out and you look at these, at, at these grants. Um, so I do appreciate that being the mindset, grant first. And then, you know, if we need to come home, we come home and, 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 and ask, you know, for, for tax dollars. Um, Mr. Carney, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
What is our contingency in the, uh, our current contingency in the ARPA fund?
Uh, presently, you have two point eight million in contingency roughly. And it's worth noting that you have ten point five million that you have not committed to a project. We have twenty-seven months to spend ten point five million once you make your decision, which equals four hundred thousand dollars a month starting in October. We're cutting it close.
Thank you. Listen, I don't disagree with, with what anybody said here, right? I think, I think if, if the opportunity is there, this is a grant, right? It's not, it's not taxpayer, it's, well, everything is taxpayer funded. But you're not coming back to your districts and saying, I'm gonna add this to your budget. So this is a grant. Um, I do agree that it needs to be sustainable. So whatever that, that wearout period is that you'll begin to pick in your budget, you know, replacement of, of these vests, should they, they be approved, so you maintain that program going, going forward, right? No different than what we, you talked about earlier with the MARB, with the Safer grant, right? No, no different there. So, listen, in my mind, you know, this is a necessary piece of equipment. I wouldn't wanna send my um, my firefighter into a situation where I know they could potentially um, come into contact with, with deadly force and not have a ballistic vest. So I think it's necessary. Um, I don't think it's a nice to have. I think it's a have to have. Um, so we, we have money in contingency. Again, I, I think I, I understand everybody's point here. I'd like to see this program sustained uh, going, going forward. But um, I, I think it's an appropriate use of, of ARPA funding and, and I'll be supporting the request tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, anybody else? Mr. Carney, wanna make a statement?
Uh, I called the um, supplier of the vests today, and they do have a state contract number. I was able to obtain that. And that will satisfy the rules of ARPA purchasing. So both the mask and the ve, the vests are covered in the ARPA in the present form that being delivered to you today.
Thank you. Thank you, chief.
Anything else? Can I just be, one last comment?
All right.
Thank you for your time. We really do appreciate it. And um, I know Chief Perno's coming before you for the mask. And we totally support um, his request also to protect his officers because, again, we work hand in hand and uh, and we wanna make sure that they're protected uh, to the highest level. So whatever we can do to help the police officers, we support. Thank you.
Why we can?
No.
Not now.
No.
They bring up Perno now, right?
No. Um, so because it's, I think it's because it's the council as a whole, we could, we could get through this first. And I don't mind reading this. Um, the motion typically is made by the chair of the committee and you are that person. So you could make um, you could make the motion, somebody could second it, and then I'll finish reading it and we can vote.
I wanna take a roll call.
Yeah, that's fine. So you, you would be the one that makes the motion.
All right. I'll make a motion that uh, we grant the money for the vest purchase.
And then um, I'm gonna read it and then we can do the roll call, okay? Is that okay? This is just basically our boilerplate resolutions that was provided to us. So it says, uh, "To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your committee on council as a whole to whom was referred the matter of Mayor Nancy R. Rossi's ARPA community investment plan regarding EMS worker ballistic protection equipment, reports at the committee event on the twentieth day of September to consider said matter. Whereas the city is in receipt of certain federal coronavirus stimulus funds herein after referred to as ARPA funds. Whereas the mayor has submitted to the council an outlined plan for the expenditure of ARPA funds. Whereas the city council has fiscal responsibility for the appropriation of ARPA funds under section four of the city charter, entitled supplemental appropriation. Whereas the mayor, her administration, and impaneled citizen review committee have executive duties for administering, administering ARPA funds, including but not limited to the purchasing requirements of chapter forty-two of the code of the city of West Haven, attached hereto for reference. Whereas the council is required to appropriate funds for the projects the council selects to fund. Whereas this resolution is intended to supersede and replace uh, previous resolutions made on the same subject resolved, that the city of West, the city council hereby appropriates funding for the following project. EMS worker ballistic protection equipment for forty-eight thousand five hundred. That's the correct amount, correct? Uh, funds to be used to purchase ballistic protection vests and equipment to protect EMS workers employed by the West Haven Fire Department from stab and bullet attacks when responding to crime scene injuries. Uh, further resolved that Nancy R. Rossi as mayor of the city of West Haven shall develop a program, narrative and project budget for the ARPA funded program listed above. Re, uh, B, report said narrative budget and resulting expense accounting reports to the city council for oversight and monitoring, no less than once monthly. C, uh, the monthly reports to the council continue until all funds are expended and final reports are made to the US Department of the Treasury for the ARPA funded projects. D, that contingency fund shall remain unappropriated until the city council authorizes transfer to an approved expense account. E, that all project cost overrun shall be approved by the city council before costs are incurred. And F, that all project surpluses be returned to the ARPA contingency fund for further action by the city council. Further resolved, Nancy R. Rossi as the mayor of the city of West Haven is authorized and directed to execute and deliver an annual documents related to this resolution on behalf of the city of West Haven and to do and perform all acts, things, and things which she deems not to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents.
Okay, thank you. Before I take a roll call, vote, any discussion on the? Okay, we'll take a roll call.
Councilman Gary Donovan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor?
Yes.
Councilman Ronald Quagliani?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell Gallagnano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robin Watt Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker?
Yes.
Councilman Robert Bruno?
Yes.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone?
Yes.
And Chairman Massaro?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries and hands.
Thank you.
Here Joe Perno. Call to Communication twenty-seven. Chief Perno, would you like to come up and explain?
PD never wants to be outdone by the fire department. You haven't been yet.
That's, that is a um, average used uh, current in operation gas mask. And you can, yes, that's our current mask. You could tell the uh, somewhat of a dry rot on the straps. And um, it's eighteen years old. So.
This is the top, I'm assuming?
No, that's the bottom.
That's the bottom?
Yes.
The canister that would actually fill the ring.
Did you wanna try it on?
No, thank you. It's not my size.
You have to take your glasses off?
Mine is much bigger. I'll pass it down. Be happy to pass it down.
I was gonna try it on, sir.
You got no one?
No, I don't take, I don't take anything unless it's already paid for.
Good.
We didn't pay for it, so I don't have it.
That's a true word from a police officer.
So, um. We currently have twenty-six. We're asking for twenty-six. Uh, they are um, eighteen years old. They were received when the federal government was uh, very free with uh, money through grants. Uh, right after nine eleven, two thousand and one, uh, they were uh, allowable under grants. The, the grants that are out there now, they're not allowable. They're all technology grants that we can get. So the grants that we get now are from the Department of Justice and they're called burn grants, which is named after New York City police officer who was assassinated back in, I believe, the eighties. And uh, most of the grants back when the chief was chief, were in the forty thousand range. Now we're lucky if we get sixteen thousand. So they've uh, decreased enormously and the availability of what you can get under grants is more technology as opposed to equipment. You can get any kind of software that you want, but as far as something like that, it's not allowable. Um, what we get for our, our vests, we have, it is a separate grant called the Bulletproof Vest Grant. And it's a fifty fifty. So you guys, okay, the line item for it, and that's fifty percent of what we have to spend. They reimburse the other fifty. The new masks uh, allow for communication, both local and on the radio. We just learned that uh, they also filter out fentanyl. Uh, we started asking ourselves, is this what we really want? Is this what we really need? Aside from just replacing those, is this the one that we really want? And then the manufacturer said, well, it does this, 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 and fentanyl. And he says, whoa, yeah. That's good. We like that. Um, as far as knowing about this, um, Deputy Chief Johnson was kind enough, I'll use that word, kind enough, to come over and give us a fit test, which was an OSHA requirement where they see the seal. And as you can tell, this, that's not a very good uh, seal. Uh, it's basically because of its age. But I guess eighteen years ago was state of the art. And we didn't, we didn't, had no idea that this was even in existence, a fit test. We just, you know, how, how big is your face? This is the size of the mask. This is what you get. And if you just pull the straps and you're out the door. We basically went with uh, just changing the canisters. And we got canisters not just for use for, in training, and then we have our other ones that we use for actual uh, incidents. So we're looking for something that we were uh, brought to our attention through OSHA and the fit test that the fire department, Deputy Chief Johnson uh, did. And he can probably explain the, the fit test because I don't really know. Initially, we thought it was the, the machine, right?
Yes, so um, it's an OSHA requirement that's, uh, test this from annually, both for firefighters and police officers who wear those uh, riot and SWAT team masks. And um, at first, we needed a, a special adapter. We thought that was the issue because our masks are different, our, our self-contained breathing apparatuses, those are canisters. So we did that. We still couldn't get the police officers to pass. Uh, then we thought it was the machine. Had it calibrated and checked, it wasn't the machine. It came down to the fact that due to the, the condition of these masks, we are unable to pass any of the SWAT team and riot team members for a qualified OSHA fit test.
And I know we said annual, so I hope OSHA's not listening, but we really never did it annual, annually until uh, it was offered. So. Listen, total transparency. We, we go with what we have and that's, that's just the way we, we'd get by. We got these through a grant. We use them until their life expectancy is over. And that was actually told us, we would still be using them if we didn't have the fit test. But God help us though, we needed them. The fit test was.
Our police officers and our, and those masks are at risk, a high risk.
What was that? Anybody have any questions?
As uh, Mr. Carney said, the vendor is also Safewear and they have a state uh, contracted number. So basically, that's a paperweight, but now, so.
Ready?
Yes.
Are these assigned to individuals?
Yes.
So each individual is given the mask. It's their personal equipment after that?
Correct.
So when they're.
It belongs to the department, but it's assigned to an individual.
So how, so this is what I guess I'm getting at. How many, you're asking for how many of these?
Twenty-six. Twenty-six, to replace the twenty-six that we have.
So are you covering, so I'm struggling, how many offices are on?
Twenty-six.
That's it?
These are our special response team.
Okay.
This isn't the entire department. I'll come back with one hundred and twenty-one if you want.
I'm just checking because I'm just trying to make sure that what we're saying is what you're saying. And so that's why I'm struggling with that because these are supposed to be used for individuals. You fit test individuals.
Correct.
Every mask has to be properly fit.
Fit tested that individual.
Tested to that individual, you can then only wear that mask. In simplest terms, if yours malfunctioned or broke during a situation and you wear a large, you can't put an extra large on or immediate and go back in.
Correct. Okay. Thank you.
Hey Chief, thanks for being here. Just so we're clear, because I'm assuming someone else is going to ask it if I don't. This was just like our fire department scenario. This just happened recently because of our testing. We didn't know about this back in April when we were doing our budgets, correct?
Correct.
Because I know people are going to be asking me, people are going to be asking other council members, you know, there was two hundred thousand dollars that we maneuvered leftover from the police department and obviously this could have been used for that. So kind of piggybacking what Councilwoman O'Connor said, I think going forward, I think it would help both sides if we start a line item of putting money towards equipment we're going to need because like all the chief said, times are constantly changing and, I mean, listen, I am all for this. I think it's a no-brainer. But as always, I will let Mr. Carney show me where the money is and then go from there. But that is all, I just wanted to clarify that we didn't know about this until recently with the testing.
Correct. And Councilman Chief Quagliani has had probably the same problem that everybody has had. A line item that would carry over year to year is very, very rare. So if you put something in there, these cost fifty thousand dollars. So for the next ten years, I want to put in X amount of dollars and have that carry over for that, at the end, I can have the entire amount to purchase these when they have to. That's the, that's the issue. I think the city maybe has a separate account and all of it goes into that account and it would be delegated to fire, well, the Allentown, West Haven City of can have one little bit of that and everybody puts that into it. But in my budget, I don't have anything other than in the capital plan that would actually roll over for the next budget year. So maybe you could help.
I'm sorry, but just as a point of clarification, I would, I would get with the finance director and see if you could put a line specific to ballistic, I'm sorry, air purifying respirators in the capital non-recurring. So there are some, there's, the capital non-recurring rolls over every year, right? So, so that's, that's what I would, I would do again, just so, just, we said the same thing to the fire department, right? Just so when you get these vests, you could sustain them going, going forwards or, or continue to add to the inventory as you go forward. So that's, that's what I would do.
Yeah, that's what I plan. If you guys allow it when it comes to budget time, get them quick with your pencils.
My question's for Ken. There seems to be a lot more working parts with the masks. So this might sound silly, but is there a warranty with these if, if some of them should become defective very early?
I heard of one-year warranty.
If it lasts a year, you know, through their training, it's going to last longer.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Hamilton?
Just out of curiosity, Chief, how many times are those used in your tender?
For training and actual events, they're used for training once a month.
Once a month.
Yes, and they are with the officers when the SRT members go on any kind of assignment.
Have we had to wear them at all, like real time?
I'm sorry?
Have we, have your guys had to ever wear those, like for real time, real action, not just training?
No, they do. When they go onto a, a high-risk warrant service or something of that nature, they have them on.
Thank you.
Chief, do you, you would use these also in mutual aid and everything too, right? If you got something going on in New Haven, they need you?
Correct.
Anyone else got any questions?
Shelf life of these, any idea? Do we have that?
We've been told very, very coyly that you can probably about ten years. Which we got eighteen out of those. I mean, they're in good shape. They still work, but. Obviously not, right? They fail. But they don't work the way they're supposed to. Right, correct. All right, thank you.
Anyone else got any questions? Thanks, Chief, for coming. Appreciate it.
That is the paperweight.
Carney, want to add anything to that?
I just want to say that both request to meet all the ARPA requirements. I've checked with UHY on that. They both come off the state bid list and I would recommend that you pull this money, which is slightly under a hundred thousand, out of contingency.
I'll make the motion to purchase the mask for PD.
Second. I'm going to read the resolution. To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your committee on councils, the whole to whom was referred the matter of Mayor Nancy R. Rossi's ARPA Committee Investment Plan Regarding Police Breathing Protection Apparatus. Reports of the committee met on the twentieth day of September twenty twenty-two to consider said matter, whereas the city is in receipt of certain federal coronavirus stimulus funds hereinafter referred to as ARPA funds. Whereas the mayor has submitted to the council an outline for, plan for the expenditure of ARPA funds. Whereas the city council has fiscal responsibility for the appropriation of ARPA funds under section four of the city charter entitled Supplemental Appropriation. Whereas the mayor, her administration, and impaneled citizen review committee have executive duties for administrate, administering ARPA funds, including but not limited to the purchasing requirements of chapter forty-two of the code of the city of West Haven attached here to corporate reference. Whereas the city council is required to appropriate funds for projects the council selects to fund. Whereas this resolution is intended to supersede and replace previous resolutions made on the same subject resolved. That the city council hereby appropriates funding for the following project. Police breathing protection apparatus forty-nine thousand five hundred. That's correct. Ken? Funds to be used to purchase gas mask equipment to protect police personnel from drugs and other airborne contaminants and hazardous substances. Further resolve that Nancy R. Rossi as mayor of the city of West Haven shall A, develop a program narrative and project budget for the ARPA funded program listed above. B, report said narrative budget and resulting expense accounting reports to the city council for oversight and monitoring no less than once monthly. C, that monthly reports to the city council continue until all funds are expended and final reports are made to the US Department of Tre, of the Treasury for the ARPA funded projects. D, that contingency fund shall remain unappropriated until the city council authorizes transfer to an approved expense account. E, that all project cost overrun shall be approved by the city council before costs are incurred. And F, that all project surpluses be returned to the ARPA contingency fund for further action by the city council. Further resolve that Nancy R. Rossi as mayor of the city of West Haven is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents related to, to this resolution on behalf of the city of West Haven and to do and perform all acts and things which she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents.
Any discussion? Take your roll call.
Councilman Gary Donovan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor?
Yes.
Councilman Ronald Quagliani?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell Gallagnano?
Yes.
Councilwoman Robin Watt Hamilton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker?
Yes.
Councilman Robert Bruno?
Yes.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone?
Yes.
And Chairman Peter Masaro?
Yes.
All right, now we'll have a discussion on ARPA issues and suggestions, if anybody want to.
Suggestions?
Suggestions or?
Yes. May I?
Yes.
I think now it's time to get down to where some residents themselves personally may be able to benefit from the ARPA funds. Now that we took care of, these guys are protecting them, but they need financial help. A lot of people do. So I don't know, I, I'm going to bring out a suggestion, but I don't have all the answers and the mechanics and that's what I probably would want you to help me build this. But I think that there are many people that are struggling with rent. We've heard that before us too. So I'm wondering if we can, and I don't know a dollar amount. I want, I'm wondering if the council could put aside some money for rental assistance. When an agency maybe identifies a person who is down and out and, but on the road to success and taking care of themselves and rents are sky high and maybe they can pay the rent every month, but they can't come up with that initial lump sum of, of security in the first month's rent. I, I think it's, it's a big, it has many parts. So I would hope that it would come from like an agency who is already, who's already working with this, these, you know, with the person or with the family and that can refer them to these funds and just help them get a sure foot. That's my suggestion.
And I love that suggestion as well. Similarly, like I've said in other meetings, there are so many people that were impacted by the pandemic that didn't have the benefit of having jobs like we do, firefighters, police, nurses, others who had benefits, who had equipment, who had a good salary, who had safety, relative safety, so to speak, as things wore on and we understood better what was going on. There were people that were on the front lines of the pandemic that didn't have that. I'm talking about the grocery store workers. I'm talking about the Amazon drivers. I'm talking about the, you know, people that even, you know, the custodians and people that had to, you know, they're the bus drivers. And I go on and on and on and I'm going to miss a group of people and they're going to be saying, well, what about me? I'm thinking of everybody else that wasn't, wasn't thought of. There were also people who couldn't work because their businesses were shuttered, meaning your, your hairdressers, your, your, the people that worked in the gyms, you know, places that were shut down. All those people were impacted. The program that the state of Connecticut offered that gave COVID relief funds to, to people if they qualify was a great program. But even that program missed many of the people that we're talking about. There were still people that didn't qualify for even those funds. I would love to take a look at what we could do for those folks in the city of West Haven. I mean, we have what, fifty-eight thousand people in the city. All of those people won't qualify, but we could figure out a group of people that will qualify, that would fit that criteria and that would benefit to receive some funding. And I mean, any funding is, is helpful at this point. And I would love to just take a look at what that language looked like. And to that end, I've asked for the language that, that the state used to come up with their programs. So I'd like to kind of take that a little bit further and make sure we're able to reach the general population of people who haven't had the ability to get their hands on those funds. So I would love to work with you on that and I'd love for a group of us or all of us to kind of work together on that so that we can reach, reach the population of people that really deserve to also have funds.
No, I agree. Ken, have you, you know of any type?
Of what you do?
My recommendation would be to give me a couple weeks to talk to the ARPA people, look at the state program, come back, give you a resolution to consider. And I think you may want to Mara the amount of money you're putting or considering to put into the business resolutions that you haven't approved yet. You've got three buckets of money there. You could also start with a hundred thousand for the rent assistance and you can always add to that based on demand. But I think the best thing is for me to bring you some additional information. The second you put the hundred thousand on, we'll put it out as it is used. You can add more money to it if you feel you want to do that.
Thank you.
I think back to when all of us got sworn in, one of the top complaints and concerns we got that's been put on the back burner, and I know I've talked to Mr. Carney about this recently, is plus with recent events, we have to start addressing the drainage issues. It's in every district and yes, I get it, we went through a drought. We're still kind of in a drought. When you get six inches of rain, even the interstate of I-95 in Providence got four, five feet of flooding on it. But we still have a lot of weaknesses in every district. I'm sure all of you got complaints just as much as I did of this road's not draining, this isn't working. I think we've prolonged it long enough. We've budgeted for it and I think we really have to start addressing it because as many of you are aware, we are officially in hurricane season and just simple maintenance goes a long way. So I would like to start seeing us hit the drainage hardcore and that's all.
You want to comment on that?
Yeah, if I could. You know, the way the money was structured, it's difficult for me to go out, open a street and do more work than cleaning a culvert. If you put more money towards funding that can be put into action, you know, for flood control immediately, we could hire contractors and start doing work. The money that's available is very limited. We have issues, I'll use Lydia Street as an example. I'm told there's a collapsed pipe there. I don't have the funds, the way the money's structured right now, to open the street and fix that. The next round that you consider, if you, if you made the money more available for items that could be taken care of immediately without the big study, I could do a lot more for you.
I kind of wanted just to say something about the drainage. Are we hiring someone to kind of prioritize the city's flooding issues?
So, so the way, the way I understand it is the money that you've allocated is going towards a study that City Hall put out to bid and is running. And I keep hearing the bid's coming in soon. I think it may have come in or it's coming in soon. And that study is going to take the bulk of the money to create the priority that you're talking about. And those are big ticket items. And that opens the door to a very large ten million dollar grant, I'm told, okay? What I'm suggesting is if we had more funds available now, there are things that don't need the big study, but you need vendors to come in to pay those vendors to start doing more work. And that money does not exist the way it's been structured right now. Right now, I've got access to maybe a hundred thousand dollars. That's not enough to do what we need to do on an, on an immediate basis. So they have to run in parallel. You need, you need the, the major study to happen to give you a, a plan that opens the door to larger money. In my opinion, you also need some funds available to do smaller stuff that's affecting people immediately.
So if money was moved though, how would you, where would you start? Like how would you know where to start? If we moved money over.
Excuse me if I may. I apologize, but this equipment came off our apparatus. I have to bring it back and put it back.
Please do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So with, with the small amount of money I have now, I've been relying on input from council people, various people in the neighborhoods. If you wanted to create a better system than that, that's fine. My plan, and I'm, I'm presently doing it, is I've got a s, a small two-man architect, you know, engineering firm and we're going out every two weeks and we're hitting the hotspots and, and we're finding information. Some of that information is being told to residents that didn't know why it was flooding and what the, the problem is. Other things are much smaller. We could hire a vendor and, and clean a culvert or do something. But you can't do anything without the funds, you know, we, we need funds to address these issues.
What I don't want to happen is that, you know, we, you know, we're just playing this. There needs to be some kind of system because as Councilman Johnstone said, we've been hearing that there are issues. The fire department has identified where these issues are too. But it, I think, I don't know if we should spend any money without a really comprehensive look at. at what is needed first. Because I think my district needs it first. You might think your district needs it first. We're, you know, like, what is the priority to?
To me?
Not the little stuff.
I I'm talking little stuff, you could spend millions of dollars on little stuff. I I'm saying the 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 ten houses that get, that get flooded every single rainstorm and they're next to a culvert. I look in the culvert, I see it's filled up, the the pipe is closed. I don't have the expertise to go in there and direct someone with a backhoe to open that culvert. I need this engineer to tell me what what I can do and I can't do. That would make the priority list just because it's that easy to fix. And I'm talking about things that are easy to fix. So someone sent me down to Washington Avenue, there's a business that floods like crazy. So I go down there with the engineer and we spent about an hour and a half and we're walking uh each block over, we're following the, you know, the the pipe. And to me and to everyone else, you would say, including the business owner, you would say if I had a larger pipe, we would solve this problem. And the engineer shows me where this pipe ends up two blocks over and he says that the entire wetlands has gotta be dredged. It's higher than than the actual buildings. You can make the pipe as big as you want, it's never gonna solve that problem. My goal was to go in there, give the guy a cleaner pipe or a bigger pipe and call it a day. And through this um time with the engineer, he showed me the the grade of the silt that has filled up in the in the wetlands and where this building is. And on the rain, when the rain comes, it doesn't matter how big your pipe is, that business is gonna flood, it's a bowl. Now, that would fall into the big study. But at least with my time with the engineer, I could at least meet with the business owner, which I haven't done yet by the way, uh, and tell him what the answer is and show him the documents and show him what this engineer showed us. You know, you need millions of dollars to to dredge that wetlands over there. So that's one example. Uh, I go down to um Colonial Boulevard. I noticed that the the trap rock has fallen into the uh the culvert. Uh, the engineer tells me if that's removed and and straightened out, that'll solve most of your flooding problems in that immediate area. That's something that could be done for, you know, twenty, thirty thousand dollars, for example. So so I'm suggesting that through that discovery, the items that could be easily fixed, that have the greatest impact for the smallest amount of money, you do. Um, the big study is gonna do a study of the Cove River and all the flooding and everything else. We can't solve those problems with with the money that we have right now.
Are you working with um the the engineer or is, our engineer?
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I work, what what hap- I meet this guy Brandon, he's the engineer.
But how about our engineer though?
Uh, I keep in touch with Doug, he he has the best knowledge on on the flooding. Um, I talked to Public Works, um.
But how about our engineer?
Abdul?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I talk to him once in a while, he he uh, he's more with the bigger stuff. Uh, when I've spoke to him about um, um, West Main and uh Lake, I got some information from him on that. Um, but the smaller stuff, I've been mostly dealing with Doug and and Public Works.
So under your ARPA responsibilities, right, that you were granted, is is that like within the scope of, the umbrella of it?
I don't know. I I I mean, I I've I've been asked to make sure this money gets spent correctly.
Right.
And I think this is part of it.
Okay, thank you.
So Ken, to follow on to Councilwoman Hamilton's point. So, day one wasn't when you started investigating flooding in West Haven, right? I mean, with the ARPA fund, so there there's gotta be, I know that there are studies that have been done, I know that there are engineers that have been um contracted to look at certain areas, I know that the Water Pollution Authority has other things that they look at. I, listen, I I'd love to see some type of general ad hoc kinda get together meeting where the Public Works Department lays down what they have, the engineer lays down what they have, water pollution lays down what they have, all your your old, old um studies from from consultants that we had, we lay those down and kinda see where we're at. Take take the temperature and then, you know, they may be old, they may be outdated, but at least, at least we could get a kind of a a roadmap of of where we need to go. I don't, I I just can't, and I appreciate what you're doing because you're, you know, you you're trying, you know, you're trying to 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 move the ball. But um, you know, I I think it'd be helpful if we knew what was out there already and then maybe you could either further those or fill in the gaps or, you know, like I said, I know we have a major study that's gonna take, listen, it's gonna take a couple of years, right? But we need that study in order to get any state or federal funding, so that's, that's a part that has to happen. But all the stuff over here that I think is kinda floating around, you know, if we could kinda get our hands, our our arms wrapped around that and say, okay, what's out there that that we already paid a professional to look at, give us suggestions and that we just put on a shelf and never did it because we didn't have any money? I think those are the things that I'd I'd be looking at, the, you know, the the five hundred thousand here, the million there, that we we have an opportunity, right? You kinda, you kinda read to us the money that we have left and 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 I think that's, you know, i- i- in my mind, that's, that's a top five, you know, uh, you know, on on my list, you know? So I think um, you know, I think I'd love to see that happen. If I could, if I could help in any way, I don't have any of those reports, but but I think I think we need to have a a central gathering place where we could kinda put it all out there, or you could all put it out there under your committee and see, alright, where are we at and where do we need to go, right?
I I think for some of the smaller issues, which is really deferred maintenance, those reports have a shelf life. And I think the things we're uncovering are not, are not in a report somewhere. Uh, these are small items, deferred maintenance, things that need to be cleaned. We run into neighbors who, you know, didn't have a flooding problem five years ago. In their neighborhood, there's no additional housing, there's no additional driveways installed, there's no buildings going up, why are we flooding five years later? And it comes down to deferred maintenance, so a lot of that time it's, you know, cleaning stuff, jettisoning pipes and there doesn't seem to be funds available to do that. In the meantime, these homeowners are getting wiped out. So that'd be an example of spending ARPA money, I think, um, to go and take care of those small issues that you're not gonna see in a study. You know, the the big stuff, you have to leave to Abdul, you have to leave to, you know, Doug, I I don't really get involved in on that level. But but some of the smaller things that I see happening that could be quick fixes, I don't think you're gonna find in a study and and that's where I'm coming from.
I think there may be some medium stuff there though too, so maybe we.
Not enough money for the medium stuff, I'm talking small stuff.
Yeah, so, and then I just wanna, so, again, I said that's in my top five, right? That's one, uh, you know, food insecurity is extremely important. What Councilwoman Tucker brought up is is significant, you know, the impact of COVID, COVID in our population. Um, you know, our our children's physical and mental health, right, the parks, those are all important. Um, one thing that I don't really see, and maybe I I I haven't looked at the plan in a little bit, but is there's nothing earmarked for downtown revitalization?
No, the the closest thing we have is you, the council was presented with um business rental income incentive uh grant, small business digital literacy training and business rental incentive grant. I think there was one more. So none of the business stuff has been approved.
Yeah, a- and and I wonder, just, you know, it goes back to um, you know, this, the some some of the conversation this morning was about economic development, the only way we're gonna, you know, really something, have something transformational and and begin to 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 get get ourselves going is economic development, we all say that all the time. But yet, I I I'd really like to see something tangible that could gets us, gets us, you know, down that road. So maybe, again, these are all individual pieces, you know, re- uh rental assistance, business development, small business aid. You know, there has to be someone, right, or some entity that puts this all together and puts forward a vision of what we want in economic de- development, not just for the center, but that's what I'm talking about now. You know, what do we want the center to look like in ten years and how do we encourage, you know, through funding, through grants, through city assistance, first, through services? How do we encourage individuals to implement that vision, right? Or if, I'm afraid if we don't do that, we're gonna keep looking out the window and seeing what we're seeing. And and to me, that's not a vibrant, successful, enhanced downtown. So I I, so I will struggle with approving these things individually because they're nice to say and nice to have, but I'm not sure where what the end goal is here, right?
She looking for more of a global uh view of all this?
Me personally, I can't speak for anybody else here, but but I think we ha- we have an opportunity, right? We've talked about that word a few times here tonight. We have an opportunity to imagine, you know, and actually put money behind what we want our downtown to look like, and we can't do that in a bubble, right? We have to, we have to bring in many people, but we really need someone to champion that, right? And we need, we need that that economic development person to come in here and that's their responsibility. We, you know, we do that by committee now, this person does that, this person does that, and we accomplish very little. You know, and it's and it's not a good use of their time, it's not their their primary role. So I mean, to me, that's what I'd like to see happen, lay out a vision in conjunction, obviously, with whatever the the mayor's vision is, the planning and zoning, the business owners, this body, whomever those stakeholders are, to say, what do we want in our downtown? We have some pretty good pieces, but we got some work to do, there's a lot of gaps as well. So I I'd like to see those proposals, you know, connect up and maybe if we need to to add a little bit of money to make that, again, move the ball, I think, I think now's the time to do it, or it's it's not gonna happen.
I understand.
Thank you. That's up.
Ken, getting back to when we talked about the flooding issues. Do you have like a list of, that people told you about that?
I do, yeah, I've I've got a list of um, of every culvert in the city that uh has had deferred maintenance issues. Uh, I've heard from several council people, I've got another maybe eight spots that I've heard about.
Alright, cause maybe uh I'll give you a call tomorrow because Baker Street, I wanna know if that's on there.
Sure.
Um, and there's like two portions of Baker, I guess, there's two dead ends. It was, it'd be the portion off of Tud Hill. Um, down there, there's, and I've had Abdul there. Uh, but I'd like to get somebody else there as well to look at it and see if there's something that could be done. Cause there's three or four houses there that, I I was there when Trenae McGee was here, um, Councilwoman McGee or State Representative McGee. Um, the woman had five feet of water in her basement, so i- it's something that we need to possibly look at.
Yeah, you know, and and that's what kinda bothers me, if if a person has five feet of water in their basement and there's an opportunity for twenty thousand dollars to fix that problem, you have to go fishing for it because sometimes you go there and it's a two million dollar problem.
No, I I I agree, and again, it's probably a little bit more.
And the red tape around here to move stuff around itself.
Cause Abdul did say that there is, there's an issue there. So again, maybe, maybe we can connect and and look at that.
Okay.
Piece property, if that's okay with you. I ca- yeah, I just wanted, I didn't mean to jump in your backyard, but I was kinda there already, so. Thank you. I'm all set.
Can you mention a collapsed um pipe, I guess, near Lydia Street? That might be an issue.
Did, do we know how much that might cost?
Not yet, but that's on the list with the engineer at the next visit, so I don't know yet.
And I wanna bring up my sidewalk.
Are you ready to rumble?
Let's rumble.
Alright. On the sidewalk, putting aside for one moment, everyone's feeling on the sidewalk, I want to, I want to talk about safety over there, which is your main concern, okay?
I came prepared.
He was ready for you.
Can I understand what I'm looking at?
Okay. So the first page is um a shot of the of the area in question. And as you go up uh the street, you have a sidewalk on the left hand side that goes to nowhere, okay? You have nothing on the right hand side. As you go up further and you see the house, um, where it says Ad CW, that's, there's no sidewalk there. Um, and then across the street, there's no sidewalk. But as you go up to the next block, you can't see it because the greenery covers it, there's actually a sidewalk there that needs to be trimmed back, okay? So if the question is, how do we get people from Route One to anywhere up there? Um, I believe there's a safe way to do it, and I believe there's an unsafe way to do it.
Okay.
And my first uh thought was to go, uh, with your plan, if you go to the third page, which is this one? Okay? So, so this is the house that we would actually propose running a sidewalk along? And there are several challenges on this side of the street. The most important of which is, I stood behind that guardrail and cars came down the street fifty miles an hour, I'm not exaggerating.
And the fire department's up there. Right.
Um, I believe if you put a sidewalk here, well, what you don't know is you have to put a retaining wall in, so now you've taken somebody and you put them on a sidewalk, on one side of them is the street, on this side of them is a four foot retaining wall between them and the house, and here comes a truck or a car fifty miles an hour. It is literally unsafe. That is not the side of the street to put the sidewalk on.
And that's where everybody walks on that side of the street, for some reason.
Because there's no sidewalk on the other side of the street, that's the problem.
Right, there's no sidewalks, right.
Right, now it gets worse. If you, if you look at this guardrail here, there's major water collection there, which would wash away anything you do over time. But you'd have ice buildup like crazy because the plow comes down the street there and and that's where the snow ends up. That's why that guardrail is there, which is all banged up. If you go to, if you go back one picture, you've got the other house, see that water that's running there? Now, we're in the middle of a drought. This guy's basement runs nonstop because there's a spring under that area.
Oh boy, weather flooding issue.
Onto, onto the street. He has a sump pump, just runs nonstop. That's where we're talking about putting a sidewalk, so you have, you're facing cars and you're literally in a kill box, you can't jump the wall, you can't run in the street. You've got water problems all over the place, you've got the retaining wall, and I don't think it's safe. I think the better option, if you go back to the first page, is we maintain the sidewalk on the left side of the street. We continue with the crosswalk on a street that's very, that there's not a lot of traffic, cross traffic there, that's very easy. I I didn't see any cars coming the day we were there. And by the way, I was there with Abdul, McCarthy, Chirelli, and there was somebody else there, oh, and Leaden was there.
Okay.
So this, this isn't my idea, it's, we all talked about this, okay? So you continue to the corner and then you put in one of those um ADA ramps, okay? And then you cross the main street with a crosswalk to what will become a brand new sidewalk that'll connect to the sidewalk on the side that the school is on. We think that will encourage people um to take that path because if you go up, if you go up on the street, you go over the first crosswalk and you have a choice between going on someone's wet lawn or crossing the street with big white lines and get on a brand new sidewalk, we think that's a much better, and you'll have the ADA ramps and everything else to support that. I know money isn't the most important thing, but in this case, if you go to the last page, I can deliver those sidewalks for you with the ramps in a safe manner for twenty thousand two hundred and sixty eight dollars. If I do Plan B, which is what we all thought we were gonna do until I sat there and I encourage you to go there, stand on the lawn and watch these cars come down, you literally are scared, I'm not kidding.
I know that, that's why it's important, I've seen people there.
But you don't wanna, you don't encourage people to be in that lane.
No, I get that, I get that now, but that was my issue.
Yeah, forty four thousand two ninety nine, but that doesn't include the retaining wall. So I think you're closer to sixty thousand dollars and I think you're putting people on a sidewalk that can't be used in the winter because of constant drainage and snow, cause the way they plow. I think you're putting them in a, in a, in an unsafe scenario because someone's gonna lose control of a car, that's why that guardrail's there, cause you're, you gotta take the guardrail out to put the sidewalk in, right? If I do the other side of the street, I can give you a safe sidewalk for a third of the price.
That's fine. That's fine.
How high up does it go?
Well, there's, it connects the other sidewalk, it does the whole thing.
Well, alright, when you say the other sidewalk, wait a minute, that's there, but it's just overgrown.
Correct, and and by the way, that sidewalk is in excellent condition, but it's overgrown.
That would be this?
Correct, yes. So, so for the first part of the street, from Route One, you're on the left hand side, you continue up to.
There's a person walking right there. In your, there's a subject in your picture, they always go on that side, and that's why I picked that side. Right in the picture, it shows.
That's Tom McCarthy walking down the street.
Oh, okay, alright.
I tried to get him out of the, out of the, out of the picture, that's, that's the back of him.
Cause he was pulling my case.
So.
But I get it, I get what you're saying.
So I I give you a crosswalk uh at the cross street here, just before the blue house. I do a nice big platform there, cross over the main street to the right, to a brand new beautiful sidewalk, and that connects to the upper sidewalk which gets you into the school.
Can I just ask, why not? I mean, I see the sidewalk there on the side with the dollar stores, but. Can I just ask, why not, I mean, I see the sidewalk there on the side with the Dollar Stores, but any reason why there wouldn't be a sidewalk?
Because we we watched.
What you're asking is, is why not put a south on this side of the street?
To just have it a continuous sidewalk on that side.
Parking lot, and people do not exit onto Route One, they jump out of that parking lot onto Fairfax Street to get onto Route One. You don't think that's a safe place for a sidewalk?
All right, so then where would, where would it, come and show me, where would it start here?
So it go, it goes like this, you go to the landing here, which is very safe, you do a crosswalk, brand-new sidewalk, existing sidewalk.
So, good. One more time.
Yes.
So this, um so this is a bu- people get off, there's a bus stop here, right?
I think the bus stop's here, actually.
I, are you, is it here?
I'm pretty sure.
I thought it was before the light, but I believe you.
If it, uh, we could check on that.
Well, it says bu- you're right, Kathy, look it. It's the bus stop is on.
It doesn't stop there, though, I think it's not shit sidewalk.
I don't think there's a crosswalk on that side of the street. I think it's on the do- the Family Dollar side.
Okay.
So you do this, you put the platform here, you do that, okay, which gives you enough room to run on the way if a car comes down.
So I, the only reason why I'm.
New sidewalk exists.
Only reason why I'm asking the question is, to your point, cars are coming down that hill so fast.
Crazy.
And I just happened to remember, like, I was a kid, I grew up here, I've been here all my life, and I know so many people have gotten killed in that intersection.
When I was standing behind the guardrail, a young lady was coming down in a truck texting, and for a second, I I almost jumped out of the way. She, I mean, she recomposed herself and got back in the street, but that is no place to put pedestrians.
That's my point, so I don't like the idea of anybody having to cross that street, especially at that spot, that high up, because it's so dangerous. And my worry is um that if you force people to have to, cause, cause they're coming off that hill, and they're just getting ready to start hitting brakes to come to the stoplight, so they're flying down that hill. I mean, honestly, there needs to be some speed bumps up in here somewhere, honestly. Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so I I'd rather see it on this side of the street, even move the bus stop, but have it be on this side, so you're just walking up, and they don't have to cross.
I'll get the team back together and look at that, there there was an issue there with this parking lot, but I'll find out for you.
I mean, even if you started this, the sidewalk like on this side where there isn't, you know?
I understand.
I just don't like people to have to cross that street, anywhere on that street, because it is so dangerous.
I'll have an answer for you in a couple weeks.
And I don't think they would anyways.
But certainly, whatever we do here, it's gonna enhance the neighborhood considerably and create a much safer environment.
Safety, yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, to go off of that, Kent, um and I went up there and I I saw it. I'd like the the sidewalk on that side, my thing would be, maybe we can get the Traffic Division over there and possibly look at stop signs.
We had the Traffic Division there, that was the other person I forgot was there, we had the, we we had the Traffic Division there. But but I can uh, I can have them come back out.
If we can add a stop sign either at Carrigan area, that would stop them, they'd have to stop there. And they won't be coming flying down there, or the next block down towards the Post Road, but by then, you're already hitting that curve. You know what I mean? So I'm just wondering if maybe that is.
Staying away from the curb is the best, the best thing you can do.
Yeah, so if we can get a, like a stop sign with, and I know I'm I'm asking a lot here, because it'll be a new stop sign, my suggestion would be maybe to the Traffic Division farther up, put a l- a blinking, say, stop ahead, you know?
Yeah.
Type of thing, so that they know there's a stop sign coming up.
I'm gonna say school ahead, too.
You know, because uh you could put the stop sign up, and I may live there my whole life, never seen the stop sign, guess what? I'm not gonna see it, right, until I drive, maybe one day drive by it, and I was like, well, what was that? Uh just something that, to think about that, and maybe, cause I know speed bumps are are out.
I'll do the research and get back to you. Thank you.
Our speed bumps out?
Can't, because the fire department.
The first.
Oh, down this street, yeah.
Yes, sir. Um I know you got a lot on your plate, when you're out and about looking at different sidewalks, I have, I have a mystery I need help solving. The potential for a walkway on Jones Hill Road from Winslow to Tim's Auto. Over the last couple of years, since the expansion of Dive Bar and the blossoming of that plaza, now that Family Dollar is there, and Riptide is doing well, and with the limited parking in the plaza, I have more people than ever, and I'm sure Mr. Bruno does too, because Jones Hill Road is the the cutoff there for the district.
You're talking about a south on the State Street, right?
That's the mystery. I've talked to Representative Ferraro, he doesn't really know, he's asked, apparently according to history, the state says it's not their problem, it's a you problem, we've said it's a state road, it's a your problem, and nobody wants to take action on it, but I've got women and children and strollers going around that bend.
I've seen them, I've seen them.
And and it's a disaster, and it's only a matter of time before somebody gets hit.
Okay.
So if you could look into that, I would greatly appreciate it.
Understood. Yeah.
We got told it was a state road when I looked into it also.
I notice.
Yeah, the state should cover.
Problem sticky over there, but I agree with you on getting something like that.
That's all, Chairman, thank you.
Chairman, can I just ask one quick question?
Oh, yes, certainly.
Kent, isn't to to go back to Councilwoman, why, isn't there uh an outside agency that's looking into the flooding problems for us along with Abdul? Like, don't we have an engineer firm that is is looking into the flooding problems outside of norm?
So that's the bid that went out. I've heard a couple of different dates, the bid was supposed to be opened. I haven't checked in the last week and a half, but I believe it's been opened. That firm will then be the third party that collects the data, we're, you know, Councilman Quaglin was talking about earlier, and then start do the big study, and that'll take, you know, twenty-four months or so.
Okay, 'cause I really hate to see the money spent on another study, and then it gets put on a shelf somewhere.
Well, you're you're mandated to.
And no one's looking at the study.
I'm told you're actually mandated to put X amount of dollars a year towards these sort of studies. Um that's sort of solves that problem, but um while that's happening, I think there's an opportunity to do smaller stuff, cut through some of that tape.
Yeah, I understand. I just wanted to make sure for the record that that indeed somebody was looking at it outside of Abdul, which is the study you're saying is being performed.
Right, okay.
Nothing else.
Um to go back to the very beginning, I really like um Councilman Robbins' thing about the um, the security deposit help. Do you have an agency in mind already? How would that be distributed?
I I'm gonna do some research off the top of my head, I know the state had a program. I think some of the local churches may have a program, um and the city may have a program, I don't know. But but I think it's, I think I'll go do some research and come back with some, some facts.
Cause I think it's really, really good, I just wouldn't know how to get the money to the right, you know?
Yep.
How to, how to say, yes, you get it.
Right.
Thank you, that was it.
I just wanted to get it, Kent, you mentioned it a couple times. You were saying, if you had more money to put in for the flooding, for the smaller, well, how much are you?
Um I I would, I would wait until I get a couple bids on some of the things we wanna do, but you're, you're probably looking at another couple hundred thousand dollars. Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't.
Right. You you also have, um, you know, I mentioned earlier, you've got ten and a half, or after tonight, ten point four, not committed. One of the things that I think may be dying on the vine here is the um, the housing, uh homeless shelter. You've got a million dollars there, you might wanna turn that into a micro grant, take some of that money and turn it towards flooding, and get rid of the bigger projects. Um, A to small business, we have a million dollars, you have not acted on that yet, we, it's gonna take some time to vet those people. We should probably think about moving on that. The Arts Center, we did hire and um a design firm, uh using funds that the city already has. Um and they have a clear understanding what they have to, you know, design and do. So at some point, that three and a half million's gotta be considered by the council. And I have the four hundred and eighty-five thousand sitting in broadband access. I would strongly consider, um, I recommend, I should say, that you put that towards cameras. Um, we 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 got an engineer on board, we, we're gonna pay a very small amount of money to engineer it. The first uh camera system's gonna go between West Walk and Sandy Hook, and then we're gonna have other areas that gotta be done right away. Um we could use some more money in in that area, and that, and that's something that's gonna be around for a long time, it's not gonna go away, so.
What about um, in the more access, is there anything that can be done to make um, like hotspots? You know, broad hotspots that cover wide um areas?
Yeah, I know the schools are hooked up to fiber, and I know that um if you go into the parking lot of a school, you can get Wi-Fi. I know some houses in, that are very close to those schools can also get Wi-Fi. I gotta tell you, I I have heard so much about, we have fiber optic, we don't have fiber optic, we did have fiber op- i- it's crazy. I I just wanna get a camera system up and running, I wanna bring a laptop in here and show the council a successful camera uh system from ARPA funds, and then take it from there.
We do have a hotspot program at the library, right?
You have the literacy program, yeah, the hotspot literacy program, yeah. Yeah, the the um navigator program, and and they're doing, that's going pretty well.
And Kent, these cameras that are going, being installed, they're gonna be installed on city property, right?
Correct.
Not private property?
No, no, city property, of course. No private property. Get a lot of calls for private property, but whole city.
Anybody else got any more questions? Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.